Let's get this started. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall for October 14th. We have one item on the agenda. It's my, yeah. Design concept for the downtown Pavilion Market. And we have Martin Pastoucha and Jeff Minis to present.
Turnover Jeff Minis, he's the Facilities Director for the Public Works Department, City Rent.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Jeff Minis. I'm the Facilities Director. And tonight I get the honor to present to you a highlight of the current status of the Pavilion event space conversion into a year-round market hall and what we're looking for to receive as far as moving forward for the next steps. Hope that everybody's been to the Pavilion at least once. If not, please let me know. I'd be happy to take you through the building. It's a lovely, lovely space. The Pavilion was constructed in 1948. Prior to being purchased in the city, purchased by the city in 1997, my understanding is it was used as a car dealership. If anybody has more information, I would love to talk to you about it offline. The civic core plan adopted in January of 2018 identified opportunities to reactivate and revitalize the city's Pavilion space, which is currently being used as an event center. In June of 2022, the city sent out an RFQ, or Request for Qualifications Soliciting Proposals from qualified firms to help design three concepts with the estimate of the Pavilion project. We ended up receiving four proposals. The architect firms were Bayless Architect, who sent in a proposal, Johnson Architects, Ark Architects, and Graham Baba. We use a scoring system that was provided in the RFQ, where Graham Baba was selected due to their extensive experience with similar projects throughout the region as, such as the Melrose in Seattle and the Privus Market in Wenatchee. So that's just a very short background of the Pavilion and how we got to where we're at today. The concepts provided, which were three concepts, we kind of took some of those and turned it into one overall concept after going through it. So the concept overview, which we asked Graham Baba to create for us, commenced work in the fall of 2022. Some of the base guidelines of this was to work primarily within the buildings, inside the buildings of the four walls. We didn't want to step too much outside of the Pavilion itself as there's a lot of other projects happening around that area in general coming for the near future. So some of those modifications does have for entry areas for opportunities of improved accessibility and visibility of the area. It's a unique situation with the Pavilion. Kind of hard to tell which is the main entrance right now. Restaurants and cafes space were also asked to be a part of the proposal along with fixed retail spaces and booths and portable retail opportunities. So those kind of carts that you could fold away and take away if you wanted to use the space for something else. So creates a little bit of an event area or other activities that you may have after hours inside the Pavilion itself. The current project status. We received the three concepts that were developed. And out of those three concept options, we narrowed it down to one based on design and functionality. We then refined those concepts quite a bit all the way up until June of 2023. And then this is where we're at today. So we kind of selected what we liked. We made some changes to it, and I'll show you a picture here shortly. And what we're asking for in this proposal here, which will be an agenda bill coming forward to council and referred to the Finance Committee is to move forward with Graham Baba's Design Services Amendment Number Two for the current contract. So that this proposal that you will see will include architectural design permitting and construction documents, bid assistance, construction administration services, along with the overall start from the beginning of the project, which is the concept, all the way into our design phase. So schematic design, design development, construction design documents, including bidding and management throughout the whole process of the construction. So we will not have to come back most likely, hopefully, for any kind of agreements with Graham Baba as this is the one and only that we should need minus any small change orders or amendments. But in general, this will take a start to finish. What we see here is a modified design of all three concepts, actually, that we felt, that the city felt that was the best as far as our core group. So when you're looking at here on this picture, we have right from the kind of the north entrance where you would walk in from the parking garage, walking south, the north entrance by the restrooms. We have two stalls that are currently what we call wet stalls. So you're, we're thinking butcher market, fishmonger, those kind of items that would need to be, that would need the water and drainage, putting them close to the restroom back wall there where all of that piping is already there. Along off to the west side, we have, well, actually, it's the center. The space on the west side are tax ten-by-ten flexible market stalls. These could also, this is still very concept. So they can be a change and adjusted as we see fit during the design and schematic design phases. We'll have outdoor seating, anchor tenant on the west wing, possibly new entrance on the south end. Code is requiring us a new vestibule and some different doors for energy code. As we move along towards the east side, we still have more outdoor seating, a second anchor tenant along with the kitchen classroom. And it's hard to tell from this design, but where the kitchen classroom is currently, it has two double doors. This is all possibly going to open up and you could use the space south of the kitchen classroom area as a overall event. If you want to do kitchen, like learning how to cook and then kind of bringing that out and actually eating the food and doing all the, anything you want, actually, things that you can imagine, I guess, as far as what you would like to do in the kitchen classroom. Along with this, on the right and northeast side, we do need to find some space for loading and unloading. So kind of the back of the house items in that area. So this is very, still very much a concept and we're just trying to get the idea on paper. Current project financing. Has this current, the current design cost for Graham Baba was $116,862. The agreement request that I'll be asking for is an additional $745,117, which is bring our total up to $861,97. And that would be the total cost for design for the Pavilion. The city was awarded $1.5 million of federal grant funding. Thank you to CED for getting us the 1.5. A hundred thousand of that will be applied to the design contract with 1.4 million be implied towards construction itself. To date, the estimated project on our concept, from our concept designs are from 7.1 to 8 million. We will be having updated finance numbers during each design phase. So schematic design will get new numbers during design development will get new numbers. And during construction documents, we'll also get new numbers. So we'll be working with finance through the whole process of making sure where we're at as far as a estimated cost for the project. The city currently has allocated 2.4 million with a total budget of federal and city funds, putting us at 3.9. Currently additional funds near 3.6 to 4.1 million for this project at the moment. These are some of the concept drawings that were put together as what the Pavilion could look like as a market hall. This top left one here has the outside essentially reimagined with outdoor seating. The right picture here is the interior side where you can see actually the very nice roofing that is, that the Pavilion offers and that we definitely want to keep intact. It's not too often you see buildings with this heavy timber roof consisting of bowstring trusses essentially. It's very beautiful and we definitely want to showcase that as part of the market as well. We do not want to cover that up. And down on the bottom left is just another rendering of what it could look like as far as those movable booths or stalls for vendors. The proposed schedule has us 33 weeks for, it's actually 33 weeks to about 44 weeks to complete the design process for documents from the concept design where we started, all the way up to our bidding documents essentially. So we could go out to bid. We anticipate 13 weeks of the bidding process. So that's five weeks of bidding with eight weeks of review, review and approval. So that's our time plus coming to council for review and approval. With overall construction of the space, looking at 32 weeks. So a total of 36 weeks with punch list items. So quite the timeline. Approval of the amendment and the current design agreement. So this is what we will be asking for with the agenda bill is approval of the current amendment, the current design agreement that we'll be putting forth prior to the award of the construction contract. We'll also be creating, actually before the construction contract, starting right after this, we'll be working on hiring a consultant to help create the operating and lease agreement for the tenant that will be managing the facility. So that is quite a big undertaking as we will have to find, we will find a consultant that is familiar with Marcus Space leases and agreements to help us craft the agreement so that we are able to protect our interest for the city of Renton. So what that looks like, we do not know yet, but I'm sure I will be presenting to you hopefully again as to what the details of those agreements will be. Very straightforward and simple. We're very much just the beginning process of the design phase. So details and information is extremely limited at the moment. I'm open for questions and comments. Or if you would like me to elaborate more on the actual design phase of the project or the market hall itself, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President.
You have Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for the presentation. Great job. And you may not be able to answer this question yet, but it popped in my mind when I was looking at the, the schedule, the proposed schedule. And I mean, because there's not any, it's 33 weeks, 13 weeks, 36 weeks, there aren't any dates on it. And we do currently have a tenant in that building. What has our communication been like with that tenant? And what are we telling them as far as their booking of events and, and the sort?
You're, you're correct. So we are looking at weeks because we don't know when we will be able to provide notice to proceed. So as soon as we are able to give the consultant the notice to proceed, we will be able to secure the data a little more accurately. My conversation with the current tenant, I just spoke to him a couple of weeks ago. He's in very much informed as to what is happening. His lease is up in January of 2024. We want to extend his lease as long as possible. That does not compromise the designer construction of this building. So we want to have a team with, a meeting internally with our team along with the consultant itself to pick the best date of how far we can extend that agreement with that tenant. We understand the operations. That tenant needs also quite a bit of lead time, weddings and conventions that are happening there. So, you know, we, we understand his value that he's, the tenant's brought to the city. And we do not want to damage that relationship in any way. I've worked with Rain City for quite some time now and they're just a great group. So we are in communications. It's probably not the ideal situation for the tenant there, but we are willing to work with them as much as possible and extend the lease as long as we possibly can. We want to collect our revenue as part of that. So that way we can reinvest the money, whether it's for this project or something else. So yes, he's, so I hope that answers all your questions on that.
It does. Thank you so much, Jeff. Thank you, Madam President.
President. So on the financing, the thing that caught my attention was the current design agreement cost 116 and then increased to 745. That may or may not be typical or normal or whatever, but was that unusual? That, that sort of escalation in, in what was in, in that cost, I mean, you know, estimated or whatever, whatever you want to call it.
I would say it's comparable. Professional service contracts, it's comparable with construction contracts throughout what I've experienced. Professional service contracts are based on qualifications. So we don't always go by pricing. So we're not, we're not always hiring the lowest bidder, for example, where a public works contract, we would. Construction contracts could, design contracts could easily be 10 to 20% of the actual total cost of the project, project. So I would say this is right on par with that as far as Costco. If you were to consider the family-first center or when we built Fire Station 15, for example, those were roughly coming in about the same percentage of the overall cost of the project. The difference of one, the 117 to the big jump from 700,000 is the amount of work that they'll be putting in. So when we're talking about the schematic design is when we'll get all of our information, kind of our major changes put in and then going into design development where all the details happen. And then the construction documents, if you've ever seen like all the blueprints and all those details from your submechanical, so it's mechanical, electrical, all the codes, all those will get kind of laid out and picked through. So I would say from my experience, which is roughly close to about, about two decades of facilities management experience, I would say this is normal.
Thank you.
Yes, to follow up with Councilmember Prince, how far out is the Pavilion scheduled so far with different events and things?
To my understanding, up until the end of the lease of January 2024. So nothing beyond that. I have not heard otherwise from the tenant if they have booked anything other than that. We also have a three-month built-in month-to-month process that we worked with the tenant as well. We understood that month-to-month would not work for his type of business. So we are able to agree on a three months. So if we had to, we could go in three-month increments. It's not ideal. So, but just, we did have that in there, trying to work with the current tenant as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just remind me, are we currently subsidizing that building?
Are we subsidizing the building? No, we're actually receiving 15% on their revenue. So no subsidations really at all, actually. There are, the lease agreement isn't the best agreement the city's put together. It's definitely an older one. So there are some maintenance, maintenance items that we are responsible for that in a newer lease agreement that we may not offer. So our current revenue sharing is 15%. So as of 2022 last year, the city brought in about 47,000 revenue from the current tenant. So 15% of that would be roughly around 300,000 for the tenant.
Thank you.
Yep. And just to clarify, and with the design, so all of these little flexible market stalls, they can be moved out and the main area can be used if it has been in the past?
That is, try to go back to the, the picture.
All right.
So only a portion of it during the actual picture itself for the flexible stalls can be moved. But the main stalls in the middle, those, I guess they're named flexible stalls, sorry. So those 10 stalls cannot really be moved for the most part. They'll have these gates that lock, so they can be locked. So that way you could use the other space. The drawing's a little bit deceptive in the sense that they're not going to be right in the center of the Pavilion. So you'll have a little bit more south space on the south end of those. So these drawings will be up a little bit closer towards the fishmonger and the butcher area or the wet stalls currently. And those will be secure. So a restaurant could have used the space for something, whether it's a cooking class with wine or any other event that you could think of. It, it will not, we could not make the Pavilion into a market and event space. We cannot do both very good. So we had to pick one. And it was market first with the event as second essentially. So if we're able to make event area, we will possibly do so. But at the mark, at the current is a market design first as the market just offers such advantages for the city of Renton when it's compared to event venue. While both are important to function in the city or urban life, the public market typically has a broader and more sustained benefits that contribute to the overall well-being and development of the community. So, yeah.
A very in-depth answer.
Yeah, I was going to ask a follow-up, but you, you answered the question very well. So I was going to ask as far as, yeah, the original concept we were shown was more of movable kiosks type design. And so I'm understanding like if it's difficult to do both well, that I can, I can understand that. I just want to make sure that's communicated because I know when it was first brought up that that was something we were told, oh yeah, it could still be used as a fence space. And looking at the rendering, yeah, looking at the design, I was thinking, yeah, it doesn't really look like those move super easy. So my question I actually want to ask, since I did have a follow-up, a different question, the construction schedule, I imagine there's going to be impacts to city events, farmers markets. I know that's a ways down when we actually get to the construction phase, but looking at the 36 weeks of construction, I have to imagine that there's going to be some impacts. And maybe we're too soon to prepare for those, but I would certainly think farmer's market is one I'd want to know about.
Possibly, we are trying to work around, we know the farmer's market schedule. We, on our team, actually, I did not explain our team. So our team consists of, the core team consists of myself and Russ Woodruff from Public Works, Amanda Free and John Cullen from CED. And then we have Erica Schmidt from Parks and Planning along with, I feel like I'm missing somebody there. Oh, Kristen from Finance along with, yeah. So that's the core team as far as, so we'll be working closely with Parks and Rec that handles the farmer's market. Ideally currently, as we have discussed, we think we'll be okay with working around that so they could still have the farmer's market going on. To put, most of the construction for the Pavilion will be inside. So I do know the space is used inside during the farmer's market. So we're aware and we don't want that to stop the farmer's market in any way. But there may be some adjustments needed.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question regarding, we mentioned the kitchen area and the potential event space that's left that could potentially come out of it is, you might not know the estimate, but as far as space, capacity wise?
Do not know. But I will let you know since we find out. We'll find out more in the design phase as to how much the capacity level of those areas get handled. I will say though, if there was an evening event, if you were doing something in the kitchen, the move, the flexible stalls could be locked up and you could use the space all around them as well. So you'll still have, we still have to be able to provide access to the restrooms. So we don't know exactly how much free space we'll end up with when it's all said and done.
I know like in, in general, when we have had events there, like for example, Faith Action Network, they've had like 45, 50 tables of 10 or so. So you're looking at capacity that goes up there. In this particular situation, probably less than 100 or so.
Yes, for event space. So we will not be able to accommodate the current event space that you see now that happens where it's, you know, 100, 200, 300 people. I know the event space is important, so I've already have been looking for new ideas. I think there's some other opportunities within the city to possibly provide event space. So, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. Jeff, this was an extensive public process when we, what, that we went through to, to come up with the final design. However, you are absolutely right. I mean, I don't remember too many people asking or requesting or questioning about events space. As soon as we move forward with the projection team plan, they start coming, a lot of people saying, hey, what are we going to do with the space? So I highly want to tell you that, I highly, I just wanted to tell you that. I appreciate that you're looking into that. Because even though it didn't come as a question during the public process, now it's like the biggest question, right? What are we going to do with our events? So thank you very much for, for considering.
Absolutely. I, I have some ideas. So we have some beautiful spaces already with our current facilities. That could be with a little bit of freshening up. RCC is used quite a bit for weddings and other events. It's not quite as big, but it does have a commercial kitchen attached to the banquet room along with right on the river. So a freshening up of that space could also double as more event spaces. So there is other opportunities within the city with city-owned property to, I think, curb some of that missing a little bit of the events. If we still had it, if there's still a need for it when it comes to the type of events that are happening at the Pavilion currently. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have two questions. Well, actually, the first is a comment. The old McLendons Building, I believe, is up for lease or sale. That's Robert Cugini's building. And so that's right on the other side of the parking garage. So that's, just throw that out there. But then at 40,000 feet, I'm looking at this graphic here of the conceptual plan and I'm looking at the back office, I mean, back of the house, storage does not include square footage for existing restrooms or MEP spaces. What's a MEP space?
That's a very good question. I don't have the answer of what a MEP space is off the top of my head. Sorry.
Probably something, something preparation or.
So it does have to do with our, that area has to do with our scullery. So we're essentially all of our back-of-house items are dishwashing. We have to collect all the silverware, all the garbage, all of the utensils and plates that would be kind of used throughout the space. And they have to kind of go somewhere. So that becomes kind of like our dishwashing kitchen area, storage. So, but I will look that up and get it back to you on MEP space.
Just curious. Okay, is there, are there any other questions, comments? Nope. Excellent job. Thank you so much for the update and really exciting stuff.
Well, thank you. And I would like to leave you with, it's an exciting project. I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I think it's very important to the city and the people that live here and the employees and the people that work in the city of Renton. You know, the decision to invest taxpayers' dollars in a city-owned public market hall, I think it transcends, trans, transcends finance, mere financial considerations as far as what it brings to the city itself by, I think it shows this embodies a strategic approach to the city's development and the prioritizing, prioritizing the economy, economic growth and community cohesiveness of the culture preservation and overall well-being of the residents. By creating a space where commerce and culture and community can converge, these market halls emerge as these powerful engines of positive change where this building will be activated seven days a week, year-round, where we're attracting the activity we want. We're helping out markets like these help break down these barriers and provide equal opportunity for minorities and marginalized groups by offering these low-risk inclusive environments where somebody could, just starting out, would like to start with a booth and then maybe move to something bigger. And then maybe it's a brick and mortar store right here in Renton across the street. It brings in these more foot traffic to all the businesses around it. So I really hope that you'll move this forward when you see the agenda bill come through. Because I, I do think it could just, the market itself will foster this independence of social integration and enrichment of the city of Renton. I mean, just to think about that, I would be able to go to a market and exchange, eat different types of foods from different types of culture. And so I'll leave that at that. But I, I think it's a very exciting project. I'm very excited for it. It's not very often that a city is building a market like this, a public market. And I think it could be the heart and soul of the city of Renton, being in the center right there. So I think it could benefit a lot of people in Renton. So I think it could benefit a lot of people in Renton.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.